Good morning. I call to order the County of Placer Board of Supervisors meeting for Tuesday, October 3rd, 2017, at 9:00 a.m. We're going to begin this morning with the flag salute led by Supervisor Duran.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Supervisor Duran. I am going to begin our meeting this morning with a minute of silence in honor of those folks whose lives were lost, those who were injured, and the tens of thousands who are going to be suffering psychological challenges due to the events in Las Vegas. So, please join me in a minute of silence. You may feel free, as Supervisor Yular is doing, to stand if you prefer, but please join us in a minute of silence. And I hope Supervisor Duran will forgive me, but this hits close to home for us here. Supervisor Duran, would you mind?
I just wanted to thank you. My sister-in-law was shot on Sunday night.
And she, just to clarify, she was injured.
She was injured, she was shot in the leg. She'll be okay.
Okay. Thank you. So, oftentimes, these events in places that aren't immediate to us here in Placer do have significant ramifications here at home. So, please keep all those folks in your thoughts as we move forward. All right. We will now move to our consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda have been recommended for approval by the County Executive Department. All items will be approved by a single roll call vote, although anyone may address, ask to address any consent agenda item prior to the board taking action, and we will remove that item for discussion. Is there any member of the board that would like to remove a consent item? Any member of the public that would like to remove a consent item, either here or in Tahoe? Seeing none, this is a roll call.
Duran?
Yes.
Wiegant?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Yular?
Montgomery.
Yes, thank you very much. We're now going to move to public comment. Any member of the public may address the board on any item not on today's agenda. This is your opportunity to address items that are not on today's agenda. You have three minutes per person for any public comment. If public comment cannot be addressed in 15 minutes at the beginning of the meeting, we will take it up again at the end of the meeting. If you would like to make public comment, please come forward, identify yourself, and tell us at least generally where you live. Welcome.
Good morning. My name is Bill Ross. I'm the president of the Christie Hill Homeowners Association in Olympic Valley. I'm here at the direction of the Board of Directors. It's a 32-unit development that's existed since 1974. Seventy percent of us have lived in it since either the beginning or for over 30 years. We're approaching an appraised value of $250 million, and we believe our tax rule value now is in excess of $200 million. I'm here to request the assistance, and I'd like to hand out a letter that we directed to Mr. Tabor, the road supervisor in the Olympic Valley area, concerning an existing issue above our property to the north. It's the conditions on both Lanny and Christie Lane that's resulted in a continuous amount of drainage coming behind the three units on our property. We believe, and we've had conversations with him through the property managers, Granite Peak Management, and had an engineering analysis that if there can be improvement to the drainage along Lanny Lane and Christie Lane, then the diversion of water, which may be associated with extensive work by the Squaw Valley Mutual Water Company and the road above, can be alleviated. It's caused significant damage to the hillside behind our units, and we would request assistance through staff to ensure the county's cooperation on this matter. County has indicated that they will accomplish improvements to the drainage facilities, especially that that runs through the property. That's the basis of the request. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else here in Auburn who would like to comment on any item that is not on today's agenda? If so, please come forward.
Good morning.
If you're here for the Out of Darkness presentation, we are actually going to be presenting that on the agenda?
Yes. Can I just say a few words?
What we generally do is we wait for that item, and then you can say as many words as you want.
Okay.
This is for items that are not on today's agenda.
I'm sorry.
No worries. It's a little bit confusing, I apologize. Is there anyone who is here for an item not on today's agenda? Welcome, please come forward.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm here to, my name's Gene Lawrence. I used to be the Hover Cave Project Manager for California State Park here in Auburn. I'm here actually because I'm helping Walter Reed, which is part of the Forest Hill Fire Board, on some situations, some impacts that are the communities involved in. So, I actually have, I only have one report I wanted to give to you guys. I apologize, it's not one for every one of you guys. This is a document that I helped put together with Walter Reed and a few other retired state and federal people, and it's a report that we submitted to Bureau of Reclamation. The biggest problem is, is in Forest Hill, there are over 500,000 visitors that come through our area, and there's only 7,000 plus or minus community members that live there. And the biggest problem is, is, you know, our department needs help. And I really feel that the document that I have and been part of putting together is something I hope that we can help find funds to help the community, let alone the recreational people that actually come up there and visit. So, all right? Thank you, guys.
Thank you, and we'll make sure that we get copies to all of the.
Yeah, I do apologize, they're just really expensive for me to put together.
No worries, I understand.
I just wanted to give you a copy of what I submitted to Bureau of Reclamation.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Any additional public comment here in Auburn or any in Tahoe? Okay, seeing no additional public comments, I will close public. Oh, wait, we got one. Oh, there we have it. Sorry. Please go ahead.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors, county staff, and my neighbors. My name is Megan Chillemi, that's C-H-I-L-L-E-M-I. I have served as one of Kings Beach Representatives on the North Tahoe Regional Advisory Council for over eight years. My remarks today are as a full-time resident of the Kings Beach community, also known as the Kings Beach Grid. My husband and I were enthusiastic supporters and fans of the Kings Beach Commercial Core Project. It revitalized our town center, increased local business, and made our beach the most popular on Tahoe's North Shore. As residents, we thought that the increased traffic through our backstreets would dissipate after construction. Sadly, that has not been the case. The cut-through traffic through the grid was bad last winter during the peak weekends. On January 2nd, I watched four vehicles that had escaped backed-up traffic on Highway 28 spin like tops and slide into each other as they lost traction on our very steep street. This summer, the cut-through traffic became an epidemic. The community was under siege. Homemade signs appeared on every street, every corner of the grid. Most of the signs read "Slow down" or simply "25 miles an hour." Others read "This is not your back road, it is our home." Children and pets live here. Drive like your kids live here. I was startled one summer afternoon to drive up Cutthroat near Bear Street to find two snowmobiles in the middle of the road. Several times this summer, signs were placed in the middle of the road so drivers had to weave their way in between the sawhorses, cones, or signposts. One neighbor on Beaver had filched a county sign after Labor Day that read "Beaver Street closed to through traffic." The neighbors applauded. Additional traffic calming measures must be found. Neighbors have suggested reducing the speed limit to 15 miles an hour or only allowing local traffic through the grid during peak summer weekends. The Department of Public Works has been a great community partner. We need the department's help as well as yours. Please consider community meetings, forums, and outreach. We need an agenda item at a future Board of Supervisor meeting, one that would be held in Tahoe. Let the local community have a frank discussion about this cut-through traffic through the King Beach Grid, the current problems, and possible solutions. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Megan.
Thank you Supervisor.
Good morning. Ellie Waller, Tahoe Vista resident. I have a couple items this morning. I'd like to request that the board consider hearing item 15A directly after the 10:30 timed item, that is, the Plan Review and Inspection Services for the Tahoe City Lodge Broad-Spec Consultant Contract. I would also like to add to Megan's comments that to exacerbate the problem, there appears to be a Forest Service and Tambo, which is the biking people, are considering multiple improvements to Beach, Kings Beach Trail with the terminus at the end of Beaver Street. This is in the middle of a residential area which has limited parking. It is almost as bad as the $400,000 worth of improvements to Speedboat Beach that's right in the middle of the Brockway Residential Area. And lastly, I want to make one comment on the firehouse in Tahoe City. I recall the fire department was obligated to remove the firehouse once their new project was construction, constructed. It's what everyone was told into the community at public hearings, and money was earmarked. It appears nobody remembers this. I even talked to a couple former North Tahoe fire personnel, and they recall the same and say, "Tear it down." It should be another view shed that complements the Commons Beach and Plaza nearby. This is another breach of the public's trust. Now the taxpayers will have to deal with this. Added to that, the facility is now being used for storage. Nobody has filed a use change. This government isn't even playing by their own rules. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this morning.
Thank you, Ellie. I'll be happy to sit down and bring you up to speed on what is happening with the fire station and what the historical background is. It's not quite the context you explained, but I appreciate your comments. Any other public comments at this point in time? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to close public comment, and I will bring this back to the board for Board Member Reports and/or County Executive Report. Supervisor Holmes?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Last week, I was at the Rural County Representatives of California Annual Conference up in Southlake Tahoe. First of all, I want to thank David Addaway and his staff from Placer Valley Tourism for providing the gift basket. Tradition has it, every county brings a gift basket. We buy raffle tickets, and then if we win the basket, generally, we donate it back for an auction. This year, the president of RCRC, Bob Williams from Tahama County, had five nonprofits that he wanted to award any auction results. There was $52,000 raised during that event. Many of that came from Recology, who serves a lot of the rural counties in Northern California. We also had a discussion at our board meeting regarding the California Tree Mortality Task Force, and also with the issue with the insurance industry, where they're canceling homeowners' insurance. Stacy Heaton, who is our RCRC chap, Staff Regulatory Affairs Advocate, was giving a presentation. I just want to let everybody in Placer County know that John McEldowney, who was heading that, was given high praise, not only from Stacy Heaton, but some of the county supervisors that were in attendance, and also I made sure that Jennifer Montgomery, Supervisor Montgomery, was recognized at that meeting as well. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Holmes. Any other reports from any board member or from our CEO? Okay, just briefly, I'm sorry that Mr. Lawrence and the folks from Forest Hill didn't stay. Wanted to just bring my fellow board and the public up to speed. As you recall, we've had ongoing conversations about the struggles some of our local fire districts are facing. A couple of them went out for elections over the summer. One was successful, one was not. Supervisor Holmes, in light of that, and I have reconstituted our small group of folks who are focusing on identifying potential ways forward for the future, both of those independent fire districts, but also our own Placer County Fire. So, just a brief heads up, nothing to report tangible yet at this point, but just wanted to let you know that that is ongoing. Okay. We will move then to our 9:05 timed item. If I can ask the nice gentleman in our AV booth to put up the poem, please. This is a proclamation through Health and, our Health and Human Services Department. Amy Ellis, I believe, is going to be presenting on this. This is relating to the Out of Darkness Suicide Prevention Walk, and we have a couple of things that are going to happen. Amy's going to give a few brief comments, then we're going to have a video from Sheriff Bell, and then I will actually present the proclamation, and then anyone who would like to make any comments on that can make any comments on it. So, thank you. Amy?
Okay, great. Thank you, Madam Chairperson and members of the board. I am here just to introduce this great topic. Last month, we had National Suicide Awareness Month, and there have been several different opportunities to celebrate that, one, some of those we are going to be seeing today. We also are going to ask you to approve the proclamation to support the Out of Darkness Suicide Prevention Walk, which will be held on this Saturday, October 7th, from 9:00 to 1:00 at the Railhead Park in Auburn. So, we'll just go ahead with the proclamation at this point. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Amy. Gentlemen, if you wouldn't mind running the video from our sheriff, please. We have no audio. He is very attractive, however. If we could get that to begin again with some audio, that would be terrific.
...he took his own life. Please seek help. Make the call.
Let's try that again.
Hi, I'm Placer County Sheriff Devin Bell. September is National Suicide Prevention Month. I think every family in the United States of America has been touched by suicide or mental illness in some way, my own included. I had a family friend who was deployed with the United States Military. He returned from his tour suffering from PTSD and didn't seek the help that he needed. Tragically, he took his own life. Please seek help. Make the call.
Great, thank you very much. All right, so we do have a proclamation here. It says, "Whereas suicide is the 10th leading cause of death in the United States and the second leading cause of death among individuals between the ages of 1 and 44, and whereas in the United States, one person commits suicide every 11.89 seconds, resulting in over 44,000 suicides each year, making suicide the only leading cause of death in the United States that has increased every year for the past decade. And whereas it is estimated that someone attempts to take their life every 29 seconds, resulting in over 1.1 million suicide attempts each year, and whereas suicide prevention organizations envision a world without suicide through increased research, education, advocacy, and resources, and urge policymakers to approach suicide as a preventable national and state public health problem, and to declare suicide prevention to be a priority. And whereas this is the time to raise awareness, direct those individuals contemplating suicide to services available to them, and provide support to those affected by suicide. And whereas, over the past year, the Placer County Sheriff's Office received 95 calls related to suicide, with a total of 55 suicides. And whereas, the Out of Darkness Community Walk is a three-to-five mile walk taking place in hundreds of communities across the county, excuse me, across the country this year, with the proceeds benefiting the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention. And whereas, by walking in the Out of Darkness Community Walk, local participants are walking with thousands of other walkers nationwide to raise money for AFSP's vital research and education programs to prevent suicide and save lives, increase national awareness about depression and suicide, and provide support for survivors of suicide loss. In deciding to walk, you are taking a step closer to making suicide prevention a national priority. This year's walk in Auburn is at Railhead Park on Saturday, October 7th, at 9:00 a.m. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the above proclamation was duly passed by the Board of Supervisors of the County of Placer on behalf of the citizens of Placer County at a regular meeting held today, October 3rd, 2017, recognizing the Out of Darkness Suicide Prevention Walk. We hope this will give our community the means to come together to promote hope, help, and healing. Thank you. That nice gentleman will take a photo of himself. And if you'd like to make some comments, please do.
Good morning, and thank you very much for having us here today. On behalf of the Committee for the Placer County Out of the Darkness Suicide Prevention Walk, I want to recognize each and every one of you for being proactive and making this proclamation a reality. This walk has been occurring in Placer County for five years, and we've now become the number one walk in Northern California. We benefit Placer, El Dorado, and Nevada Counties. As was stated in this, suicide is the 10th leading cause of death in the United States. Homicide is the 16th. This is a real problem. When I first started doing this, I did it because I heard the 22 veterans were killing themselves each day, taking their own lives, coming back from Iraq, Afghanistan, and Vietnam. I had no clue that it was a localized problem, a community problem. In 2014, 180 people in Placer County took their lives. We have three destinations here in Placer County that people like to go to if they've come to the conclusion this is the way they want to end things. I think everybody's aware of it. We've had three or four instances in the last week over at the bridge. We have the Gold Run, a rest stop, and then we have another area on the trails for the Tevis, the Tevis Run, or the horse, the horse ride, sorry, not familiar with that. But the one thing I wanted to say here is we've got a lot of people, personalities, and politics in this room today, and I'd like everybody to set aside where they're at, whether it's the left, right, gun control, homeless shelter, no matter what their politics is, and I think after the last 48 hours, we can all come to one agreement. We were given the option to save one life, just one life. Every single person in this room would take the time to do whatever it takes to help that one person and save that life. That much I'm sure of. And so, what I'd like to ask is that each and every one of you, on Saturday, I would love to see every single supervisor at the Railhead Park. I have a knee replacement, I cannot make the two-mile walk. However, I'm going to be there as a spectator cheering everybody on. I have been asked by seven different families of veterans who have taken their lives and gone to Valhalla to carry their flags. They use a big flag and they put it over the coffin. They've asked me to carry that flag in honor of their loved one and do the two-mile walk. I can't do it, so I'm counting on each and every one of you to please show up, take a few minutes out of your day, show up, and lend support. If people in the community, the county, and the country can see us to come together for this one cause of bringing awareness to mental health and suicide prevention, eventually, I believe we can eradicate it as an option. One of the things that I'm very pleased to, one of the people I'm very pleased to introduce real quick, is Paula Rusty Westeran. She kind of brings a face to suicide in Placer County. God bless each and every one of you. I look forward to seeing you all on Saturday. Registration starts at 8:00, the walk is at 10:00. It's a very easy walk, I'm told. Two miles, it'll be over by noon. You can show up the day of, you can register at the event, or you can register in advance at outofthedarkness.org. Right now, I'd like everybody to give a warm welcome to Paula Rusty. Please, can you come? Let me stay with you? Is that fine? Okay.
Good morning. Thank you, Catherine, I appreciate the introduction. On March 23rd, 2013, my husband's ability to cope with life stresses stopped. I'm a suicide witness survivor, and as Catherine said, I truly believe if we can bring more awareness to this tragic topic and this tragic epidemic, that we can save far more lives. Of course, it saddens me a great deal that my husband chose death over life, but his ability to cope had far exceeded his resources. He chose not to get help. So, the more we can make this something that's mainstream, the more that we can say to people, "It's okay to say you need help," then I think we can help a lot more people. In addition to the 22 veterans a day who take their lives, that's with only 27 states reporting their data to CDC. So, and then there's differences in how coroners report their data to CDC, so I would wager a guess to say that those deaths are probably double, if not triple, that amount. And I just wanted to personally thank you. Again, my husband Ken took his life four and a half years ago, and sadly chose to do that in front of me. And so, I too deal with post-traumatic stress and deal with every, all of the baggage that's left behind. So, every 14 minutes in America, somebody chooses death. Every 14 and a half minutes, there are people left behind that try to figure out why. So, I thank you very much for this important proclamation, and I also hope to see you all Saturday. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from any member of the board? I would hope to join you on Saturday. Unfortunately, I'm going to be at my husband's 35th high school anniversary, so I will be walking in Menlo Park. So, please know I will be out there, I will just not be here in Auburn, so. Is there anyone else who wanted to comment on this item before we move on? Okay, seeing none, thank you very much, both of you for coming, and hope we get a great turnout on Saturday.
Thank you. Have a good day.
You as well. Okay, we will move on to our 9:15 timed item. This is a Community Development Resource Agency item relating to a zoning text amendment for secondary dwelling unit housing. Shawna Purvines presenting, welcome, backed by incredibly competent staff.
Good morning, Shawna Purvines, Community Development Resources Agency, and I am here to talk, here we go, about proposed amendments to the secondary dwelling ordinance. The amendments are, take place in about four different areas, the type and size of units, parking, the approval process and timeline, and the utility requirements. As I go through my brief presentation, I'll walk through each of these. As wave, just a quick background, the law did change last fall to this section of the state law. Placer County did do an amendment to the secondary dwelling ordinance last year as a response to an implementation measure of its general plan. Just about the time you wrap that up, the law changed at the state. So, the law, the purpose of those law changes were to further streamline the implementation and development of secondary dwelling units, particularly in. and development of secondary dwelling units, particularly in support of affordable housing. That law change was unique. Although the state does kind of amend this law on a fairly regular basis, this time around, they did something a little different. They put in a clause that stated that if any portion of a local jurisdiction's ordinance is found to be inconsistent with that law, then the entire local ordinance is considered null and void. That law went into effect January 1st, effectively nullifying the county's secondary dwelling ordinance. Jurisdictions had really two options. They could default to the state requirements, or they could go in, amend their codes, bring them consistent with state law, which is what we're here to do today. As with any ordinance change, we're always looking for consistency with our general plan. These are three policies in our general plan that support these ordinance changes, particularly the third bullet, which is to explore streamlining the approval process for secondary units. So now I'm going to go into those four different section areas. The law really pertains to three specific types of secondary dwellings. It's broken down to attached units, detached units, and then units that are located within an existing structure. That could be either the primary house, or a detached garage or other structure, permitted structure on the property. The increase in floor area of an attached dwelling unit, or one that's within an existing structure, that one did increase from 30% to 50%. The maximum increase in floor area to 1,200 square feet, that did not change. The, for those structures that are located within an existing permitted structure, this is where the law probably had the most effect and did the most changes. So those structures that are contained within those existing spaces have an independent exterior access and side and rear, and meet side and rear yard setbacks sufficient to meet fire safe standards are to be allowed without restrictions. And I'll just take one step back. So the county had, as last year, as I pointed out when they did their updates, they had already allowed for secondary dwelling units to be reviewed ministerially or through the building permit. So although this was a change in the state law, it didn't necessitate a real change in the county's ordinance. Parking requirements, so parking requirements is one space per unit or per bedroom, whichever is least. And the addition in the changes in law were really in and around the exemptions for parking structures, or for parking requirements. So for new units that are within proximity to public transit, which is one-half mile, located again within one of those existing structures, located within a historic district, have off-street parking permits not available, or are within proximity to a shared car service, they are not required to provide a parking space as part of those new units. And then if existing parking is demolished to accommodate that secondary dwelling unit, then it can be replaced if necessary in any form. So the approval process and other requirements, as I mentioned, the county had already allowed for secondary dwelling units to be permitted ministerially. Now we just have a requirement to meet a deadline, so that is 120 days is the timeline to review those permits. Utility requirements, so a secondary dwelling unit can no longer be considered a new residential use for the purpose of calculating utility charges, such as water and sewer. It means that they, they would need, if going to be charged, they would need to be charged with something more commensurate with the size of the structure, not treated as a single or brand-new structure. And then for cities and counties, cannot require a new or separate utility connection, fee, or charge if the unit, again, is within one of those existing structures. So if it's detached, you still could, but if it's located within an existing structure, you cannot. However, the county can still enforce all other applicable codes and requirements such as your setbacks, your height limits, your lot coverage, including any, you know, state or federal, or fire codes in those as well. So we did go out to all of the municipal advisory councils with the exception of West Placer. We attempted to get on their agenda twice. Unfortunately, they had full agendas. We were not able to make their, their agenda before this meeting. In general, the conversations were in and around just more questioning about second dwelling units and other requirements, and the costs associated with the development of a secondary dwelling unit. There was interest in considering an amnesty program for existing unpermitted secondary dwelling units. And the amnesty program is included within the annual housing work program that your board reviewed last month, or in August, I should say, as well as, as this item is also within that, that work program. The owner occupancy was a request to have the board, the Planning Commission and the board consider removing those requirements. The item that staff has brought forward to you was to bring the county's ordinance consistent with the state law. The owner occupancy requirement is a local rule, so staff was not recommending revising it this time because we were just limiting our recommendations to the, the changes necessary for state. However, the Planning Commission did deliberate on this. They chose not to address it at this time, and so therefore didn't recommend revising that section. And then for the costs associated, because we did receive so many questions on that, we did put together just a really quick cost estimate. For second dwelling units, we looked at a variation of size, an 800, a thousand, and a 1,200 square foot unit, very basic units. And the average price for fees for those second units ran about $18,000 to $19,000. And then the estimated average annual property tax increase was about $159. With that, I will conclude unless you have any questions. Staff is recommending that the board find the proposed ordinance is exempt under California Environmental Quality Act and adopt the ordinance to amend Placer County Code as shown in Attachment 1, which includes the repeal and replace in its entirety Section 200.
Thank you, Shawna. This is a public hearing, but before I open the public hearing, we'll begin with any questions or concerns that any member of the board might have, then we will open the public hearing. Any questions from any member of the board? Supervisor Duran.
Yeah, what type of analysis did we do to determine whether or not those fees were consistent with, you know, one person, let's say for hypothetically, you know, one or two people that could actually live in the existing residence, but they're now living out in the back? Did we do any analysis to determine whether or not those fees were even warranted or needed, or?
We just looked at the, if somebody were to walk in today for a building permit, the fees that would be charged based on that type of product type.
Okay. Because that's, that's basically my concern. You know, we, we have a housing shortage here, and as we all know, and we're trying to find different ways to address it. I'm not saying, you know, that we hand out freebies, but if, you know, if the existing use is consistent, or if the new use is consistent with an existing use, it seems to me that we might, there might be some wiggle room there, but, that's just me.
So, separate and apart from this item, under the housing work plan, we are looking at possible fee offsets and fee deferrals for these types of units, as well as other affordable housing product types.
Okay, so that's, that would be something that, where they might not get any relief here, they may fall into something later that could. Okay, all right, that, that sounds fair.
Oh, and I should, I'm sorry, I should, as part of the adoption last year, the board did approve the fee offset for affordable. So should the, the person be interested in deed restricting that for affordable, then we do have that offset program as well.
That's kind of what I was getting to. Yeah, I thought that we did that.
Yes.
Supervisor Ely, your light was on, then it was off. Now it's back on.
Yeah, I'm going to actually wait. I see Sandy Harris in the audience. I want to wait until we have public comment. She's going to raise a concern that has occurred in her neighborhood, and then I'd like for you guys to speak to that afterwards. I'll let her raise that concern.
Thank you. And Shawna, I just wanted to make sure I heard you correctly. Did you say that the, the fees associated with the secondary dwelling would be at 1,200 square feet, at 1,200 square?
We did an average, looking at what they would be at 800, 1,000, and 1,200. So that was an average estimate.
Okay. Excellent. All right. Seeing no other clarifying questions from the board, I am going to open the public hearing on this item. This is the opportunity for any member of the public or representative of an entity or organization to come forward and ask questions or raise concerns. Welcome.
Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity. John Falk, Legislative Advocate, FALC, Sierra Board of Realtors. And I wanted to speak to this issue briefly. First, to just say that this is going in the right direction, and we applaud the county moving to conform with state laws quickly as possible, because, you know, in the absence of doing so, you'll be devolved down to the state requirements exclusively. Not sure that's where you want to go either. So keeping local control while maintaining consistency with state law is to be applauded. As far as the provisions themselves, we think that all of the provisions that are being put into place or have been put into place by the state of California are prudent. And frankly, what they're intended to do is to stop local government from creating unnecessary impediments to the creation of ADUs, accessory dwelling units, AKA second units, granny flats, in-law housing, whatever. ADUs is what everyone calls them now. With that said, anything that you do locally, I think should be in that same spirit. So if you do something locally that goes above and beyond what state law is discussing, we would ask that you keep that at the forefront of your mind, that it not create an artificial impediment to the creation of additional affordable housing. And this is really probably the most efficient and effective way to create additional housing stock throughout the county in a fashion that we think will really address a huge unmet need. But it won't be a paper tiger if you have embedded requirements, restrictions, prohibitions that look good on paper, look good to HCD when the state reviews it, but actually don't result in housing being put on the ground. So we would ask that you also track the number of ADUs that are actually constructed based on what you've done and are doing, as opposed to just being happy with the creation of the language. We would support the position that the Contractors Association of Truckee Tahoe has articulated in its correspondence to you, essentially suggesting that the owner occupancy requirement be removed. This is, would still be consistent with state code and would be such an example of removing an unnecessary artificial impediment to the creation of additional affordable housing. We would also ask that you ensure that any deed restriction that is discussed in relation to the creation of an ADU be absolutely voluntary, that if you mandate a deed restriction be attached to title for such a property, we think a lot of them just won't be built because it clouds title. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Falk. Any other questions or comments here in Auburn? Please come forward and feel free to line up so that we can keep things flowing, and I will get to Tahoe as soon as we've finished with comments here in Auburn.
Good morning. Gary Mappa, Applegate. At the Planning Commission public hearing in August of this year was revealed that the number of permits to date this year for ADUs was 16. And if that's not correct, let me know, but it's pretty close. With a Placer County population exceeding 350,000 based on 2014 statistics, 16 units is immeasurable in the desperate need to develop affordable housing in our county. This number alone suggests the owner occupied requirement in itself is a deterrent to increasing the number of units that the state of California is attempting to accomplish with AB 2299 and SB 1069. I am recommending and requesting that this board drop the restriction that only owners of their immediate, or their immediate relatives who live on the property could be approved to build an ADU. To date, the city of Pacific Grove is the only local government in California to drop this restriction based on the fact that it is enforceable after the owner moves out. The Nevada County Planning Commission voted to recommend to the supervisors to drop this restriction, also because it's unfair and a barrier to building affordable housing. The reasoning behind this restriction on who can build an ADU is based on the incorrect idea that only owners living on their property can be responsible for neighborhood quality. Proper management of rental units is a way to preserve neighborhood quality, and the idea that only occupying owners can do this is false. Professional managers can do this as well, and I support making this a requirement for when the owner doesn't live on the property. A professionally managed ADU is good for neighborhoods and contributes towards solving critical housing shortage. 16 ADU permits this year alone is unacceptable. This number should be doubled or even tripled. To accomplish this, it's practical to increase the number of properties in the pool of potential properties that can accommodate ADUs. Excluding non-owner, I'm sorry, excluding non-owner occupied properties from participating in the development of ADUs is counterproductive to the spirit of this ordinance, which is the intent to increase the housing stock. Financing is by far the biggest barrier for most homeowners seeking to build an ADU on their property. Generally, there are a few conventional loan options, just one more minute, that can be used if any property owner doesn't have cash to outright fund an ADU. A gainfully employed owner with tons of equity can take out enough cash from his first mortgage or second mortgage to develop an ADU. For someone with little or no income, there may be no option as qualifying for a primary residence, even with a proposed ADU, the income still needs to be commensurate with the loan size. However, if they are buying or refinancing the property as non-owner occupied, then they would need less income to qualify since the rental income credits could be used in the qualifying process. Regarding financing, Placer County has a stellar program in M-Power. Absence of financing in itself is a barrier to increasing housing stock under the ADU program.
Gary, are you close to wrapping up?
Real close.
Okay.
I would ask that we investigate developing a financing program that mirrors and rivals the M-Power program. In closing, I request that the board consider eliminating the owner occupancy requirement within this ordinance, and in its place, offer, A, both the principal place of residence and the accessory dwelling units may be rented; B, the rental shall only be for terms of 30 days or longer; C, neither the primary residence nor the accessory dwelling unit shall be available for short-term vacation rental; and lastly, the accessory dwelling units shall not be sold separately from the primary residence. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other question or comments on this? Is there anyone else here in Auburn who wishes to comment on this? Okay, after Sandy, we will.
Good morning. My name is Sandy Harris, and I wasn't planning to speak, but an incident came up in my neighborhood. We have 2.3 to 4.6 acre zoning in my neighborhood, and recently, an ownership turned over, and the new owners, it already had what was considered a guest cottage on the property, and, but it wasn't in conformance, so they had to come in to get variances approved that they had already done. So anyway, they told the planning department that it was going to be used for their daughter to live in, but it's a guest house, doesn't have a kitchen theoretically. And they also submitted plans when they came up for the hearing, and it shows a secondary dwelling in addition to the guest house. And then if you look at the codes, it says you can have one guest house per lot, and you can have one secondary dwelling per lot, but it doesn't make it clear that you can't have both. It has to be one or the other. And I would submit that guest houses are complete abuse of the county ordinances, because people are putting them in, and even though they don't have kitchens, you're allowed to have a small refrigerator, and you can have microwaves, and a lot of people can live with that makeup. So I would submit that we just do away with guest houses, have secondary dwellings to eliminate the confusion when in my neighborhood, somebody has a guest house and they're renting it out. it out, and that's not really what it's for. It's for guests. And I disagree with this owner occupancy. I think that it should be, the owner should live on the property if they're going to have this secondary dwelling. I'm not opposed to the secondary dwellings, but I don't think they should completely be, have the ability to change the makeup of your residential area and have rentals stuck everywhere, and especially if your lot's big enough to put two or three of these things on it, if your county and a guest house is one, and a secondary dwelling is the other. Just my comments.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments here in Auburn? All right, let's go to Tahoe. Questions or comments on this item in Tahoe, please come forward.
Good morning. Chair Montgomery. Sorry.
Good morning. Please go ahead.
Good morning. Chair Montgomery, members of the board. My name is Pat Davison with the Contractors Association of Truckee Tahoe. Thank you for this opportunity to share our thoughts on second units outside the Tahoe Basin. I wanted to just give you a summary of a written comment that we submitted requesting the owner occupancy requirement be deleted. We made that request based on the severe shortage in eastern Placer County. I think it's a true statement that some people are desperate for decent housing, and it's not a day or a week that goes by without affordable workforce attainable housing on someone's discussion topic. In fact, at the Tuesday Morning Breakfast Club this morning, it was announced that the North Lake Tahoe Chamber Annual Luncheon, October 19th, will be focused on housing. We need every available unit. I am not unsympathetic to the concerns that were brought up at the Planning Commission about nuisance renters, and those need to be dealt with through law enforcement, code enforcement, or landlord pressure, but you don't throw the baby out with the bathwater. Second units provide another tool in the toolbox. It's another remedy for easing our housing shortage. Taking out this owner occupancy requirement will make you consistent with your neighbors, not only through the town of Truckee, but also in your own Tahoe Basin area plan that was adopted in December of 2016. If the concern to delete this requirement deserves some consideration, and I hope it does, and you are looking for alternatives, perhaps a compromise would be that you only delete the requirement for the east side of the county. Another option or alternative would be to make it contingent for a five-year window and revisit it in five years, but we're looking for any options or solutions that might help solve our problem, and we think deleting this owner occupancy requirement would be a good step in the right direction. So, grateful for any help you can provide, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Any questions from the board for Pat before she steps away from the podium? Okay, I see none. Thank you, Pat.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments there in Tahoe? Now is your opportunity to come forward and comment on this item. Okay, seeing none, I will move to close the public hearing unless there is anyone else here who wanted to comment on this item. All right, I'm going to close the public hearing, bring it back to the board. Supervisor Duran, your light is on.
Yeah, you know, it's funny, Gary, just a few moments before you began to speak, I texted my aide about talking to Janine about looking into financing options, because, you know, if you look at what it costs to do a regular solar system, they're already spending 50 grand, you know, through the M-Power program to do that, and, you know, with smaller houses, these microhouses or whatever, I bet you, you know, you can very easily start a cottage industry if you can find that financing. And again, just like we did with solar, put people back to work and solve two problems at the same time. So, I would think it would be worth our time and effort to have staff look into that, to see what existing financing options are out there for these secondary units, and as Gary mentioned, there is a lot more risk, I think, and there may be some challenges there that we might be able to flesh out and actually meet as well. So, with regard to that last comment, I would not necessarily be in favor of just allowing one part of the county to waive the owner occupied. You know, I think what's good for the goose is good for the gander, and I think we run into a lot of legal problems by just saying that only folks in the east side can do something as opposed to folks elsewhere in the county, so.
Thank you, Supervisor Duran. Supervisor Yular.
Yeah, would you address the issue that Sandy raised of the guest house versus a secondary dwelling unit, how we're dealing with that?
So, EJ Baldi, Planning Services Division. So, guest house, as Sandy said, no kitchen facilities, cannot be rented. You can have a guest house and a secondary dwelling on the property. It falls under the accessory uses. You have to stay within the total square footage allowed based on the acreage of your property, but in fact, you can have, you know, those three structures on the property. However, a guest house cannot be rented.
Cannot be rented. I think that's, that's the key, and I think in the example that Sandy gave, she's saying that it is being, the guest house is being rented. So, when something like that is discovered, what is the recourse?
So, that would be on a complaint basis. If a complaint was filed, we would, we would have code enforcement look into that matter.
Okay. And I think the issue of owner occupancy kind of gets at that same thing. I think the reason that folks are raising the concern about owner occupancy is so that if in Tahoe, somebody does, or in Granite Bay, but where we have the occurrence of, you know, more VRBO properties and all the rest seems to be the Tahoe area, if somebody does build a secondary residential unit, we don't have two VRBOs on the same piece of property. And so, whereas I am not in favor of imposing the owner occupancy requirement in order to build a secondary residential unit, I would be in favor of looking at prohibiting renting of two units on the same parcel if you're not a commercially designated residential, a commercial operation. I, in other words, thinking of my, my own friends, okay, did I offend somebody?
Probably.
It wouldn't be a Tuesday if I didn't. Thinking of a friend of mine who has his cabin on, on West Shore, if he were to build a secondary dwelling unit on his property, he currently rents his cabin on a VRBO, but likes to use it extensively with his own family. I could see him then being in a position where he makes the secondary dwelling unit available for our, our permanent affordable housing stock or as a rental, but then his primary residence would no longer be eligible. In other words, I think that's really what we need to get at, is not having a situation where we now have two residential dwelling units on one parcel that are used for rental inventory, and really, that's Sandy's concern as well. So, I think if we can come up with something that addresses that, it might hit both of these.
So, just to clarify, the county ordinance, as adopted last year, did prohibit the short-term rental of the second unit, and that's not being proposed to be changed, so that's already in the ordinance? So, that.
Well, and that's, I don't know that, why would we do it that way? In other words, why, why if, for instance, my, my friend's cabin is available for short-term rental right now, well, if he builds the second one but takes the first one off the market, why not make the other one available for short or seasonal rentals or what have you? I, I would be open to looking at this from that standpoint of not imposing the owner occupancy. Now, he's got the main cabin that he can just keep for him and his family, but he also has the opportunity to meet some of the housing inventory needs that we have in Tahoe by making it available on the market. Just my thoughts.
Okay. In current, the draft language that we have in the ordinance today does, does prohibit both from being rentals.
Okay.
Long-term rentals is the, so, both units, the language as it's in there says, both units can't be for rentals. One needs to remain open for the owner to occupy the unit. They don't necessarily have to live there full-time, but it needs to remain available for the owner, one or the other unit.
So, does that, in your opinion, does that effectively prohibit there being two vacation rental opportunities on one parcel at the same time?
Correct, because a second part of that ordinance prohibits the second unit from being allowed to be a short-term rental. And that's.
Then it steers it back to the problem that, that I'm struggling with, and that is, what if they want to make that one available, but now they're taking the other one off the market?
Correct. So, an option, an option to, to reach maybe yours would be to modify one of those two sections.
Any other questions?
Yeah, please.
So, Shawna, if, to get to Supervisor Yular's concerns, because they align, you know, almost entirely with some of the concerns I have as well, we are trying to incentivize additional workforce housing in Tahoe. What we're not trying to incentivize is additional VRBO-style housing in Tahoe. We do not really want to turn residential neighborhoods, in essence, into commercial entities by having multiple properties potentially on one property that can be short-term rented. If I'm understanding what you're saying, one, our definition of owner occupancy doesn't mean you have to live there full-time, which I think was one concern that people had, that it somehow compelled you to live on that property. It doesn't, the way I understand it. But if we were to adopt this today as proposed, it says that only one of the units can be used for short-term rentals?
Correct.
Correct.
And it would be the primary structure.
It has to be the, the primary residence is the only, so it would preclude the situation as I described.
Correct.
Right, but a, but an owner in that scenario could themselves utilize the secondary dwelling or the accessory dwelling as their either full-time or vacation rental, if they chose to rent the primary out short-term?
Correct.
They could not rent the, the secondary out short-term and do the inverse of that?
Correct, because that, that is language that the board adopted last year, was to prohibit the, the allowance for the secondary to be used as a short-term rental.
Okay. And so, what I heard very clearly from the municipal advisory councils in the east end of the county was they did not want to see any scenario under which both units could be rented short-term on an ongoing basis. I did hear a pretty strong level of comfort with renting both units as seasonal rentals for people, the way traditionally folks have in Tahoe. A little bit of comfort, but probably less in terms of using one potentially for a VRBO style and the other for long-term rental, leaving the VRBO-style one available to the owners as they were interested in using it. Is there, other than the action that we took earlier, is there a reason that we can't delineate a use that way and not identify whether it's the primary or the accessory dwelling unit?
Yes.
Kirk, would that get to your concern?
That's exactly, that's exactly. All I'm saying is if we drop that requirement the way it adopted previously and let the owner choose, knowing that you can only have one that's available for the short-term, and one can be available for the long-term, but the owner can choose which one they want, then why can't we go that way?
I think that's what we're discussing now, is coming up with a language that we can actually do that, and whether or not we can do it at this time right now.
Okay, as opposed to coming back in the future with some language that accomplishes that goal?
Correct.
Yeah, and like, my concern honestly, though, about deferring this conversation and not taking some action today is currently we are in limbo because of the state regulations saying that the action we took was unenforceable.
And I, I think if, if staff is clear on kind of what the board's intent is, what we'd like to see, I'm fine with moving forward the action today and then having staff come back to us with a modification later.
Counsel?
I have no problem with that.
There'd be no problem in that. That would give us more time to, there's a lot of permutations in what we're, what we're discussing.
It would still take two ratings, yeah.
Yeah, for the amendment.
Yeah.
But this ordinance would take effect immediately.
Right.
Supervisor Holmes?
Well, it seems like there's consensus to delete the owner occupied provision in this, and I'm in support of that.
And I'm not sure we're actually proposing deleting the owner occupied. I think what we're saying is that the owner would have the option to identify one or the other as a short-term rental, but the other would then be the primary residence, whether it's the ADU or what we would consider a primary residence, for the owner who could rent it out seasonally. Supervisor Wigan?
No.
Oh, okay. Jerry?
I see the owner occupancy requirement as, removing that is allowing both of them to be rented long-term. It doesn't really affect the short-term nature. This is a, this discussion is about short-term rentals, and the ordinance doesn't really address that, the owner occupancy.
Okay.
So, if you remove the owner occupancy, both units can be rented on a long-term basis?
So, it sounds like what we're asking staff to come back with is language that would allow both units to be rented on a longer-term, seasonal basis, but not short-term, 30 days or fewer. Is that the feeling of the board?
So, just for clarity for me, the.
We're struggling for clarity here too, believe me.
So, the, in, in follow-up with what you just said, is there an interest in seeing a, on the short-term rental side, precluding that on, be it whichever one, precluding, or are you, you're just, I think where I'm trying to get to is for homes that have second units, are they only open for long-term rentals? Are you also still looking for some type of restriction on short-term rentals on either the primary or secondary?
So, my general feeling would be, one could potentially be used for short-term rentals. The other would have to be used for seasonal rentals at a minimum.
But you're, but you're interested in either one?
Or not, or to be vacant, you know, or, you know, or for family use.
Or be vacant, or be owner occupied full-time.
Yeah, but the, the issue being.
Both cannot be used for a short-term rental.
Okay, just wanted to clarify that.
Jerry's looking distressed. I always worry about this.
Are we saying both cannot be used for long-term?
No, we're saying both cannot be used for short-term.
I think the vision is we don't want to turn residential areas into commercial areas.
Exactly.
Right.
Any more than they already have been turned into them, I might add.
So, with that as a focus, could come back with some options, probably.
So, I think what we're hearing then is only one could be used for short-term. The other would have to be something other than short-term. We're not going to define that.
Yeah, and it doesn't matter, primary or secondary, which one is which.
Correct.
Okay.
So, shall we continue the public? Shall we continue the public hearing to bring back an ordinance that can be adopted at the end of the.
And Karen, you're looking, okay, I just wanted to make sure you were clear on this as well, so, please, please, since this is your baby in your lab.
Karen, I have the county council's office. I have to, have to work on my poker face. I also wanted to get some clarification. The reason we're here today is to be able to have our own ordinance for secondary dwelling units. The intent of the state wa, state law was to allow secondary dwelling units to be a form of affordable housing. So, my only concern in, in leaving it open is to whether the secondary is short-term versus the primary, is whether we are somehow defeating the purpose of having secondary dwellings as an affordable housing unit. So, I do want to clarify, because I understand where the board's coming, that if we take out the owner occupancy, the way this ordinance is currently written is the secondary dwelling unit cannot be rented for short-term. It has to be 30 days or greater. Taking out the owner occupancy, it really doesn't matter what happens with the, well, I shouldn't put it that way, the, the, the main dwelling unit can then be rented for short-term, for long-term, owner occupied, seasonal, it leaves it open. So, what I'm concerned about is if we define it too, too narrowly, how we in fact defeated the purpose of this ordinance. The other concern I have is how we would enforce that.
Well, let's, let's start with the first one. You, I think you're confusing the issue when you introduce the affordability element. issue when you introduce the affordability element. Where, our secondary dwelling unit ordinance is not being driven as an affordable housing tool per se. We provide for an opportunity to, um, allow somebody to reduce the cost of construction by, by certain fee waivers and all the rest, if they dedicate it for that. But this, what I think this is doing is saying that the more housing inventory there is, the market will then drive the affordability issue because you have more housing that's available for long-term rentals. So I don't want to confuse the issue by introducing that affordability issue in the first place. What I think we're getting at here with this is simply to say, I don't want to create the artificial encumbrance on which of the two units. So my friend has his main house and then wants to build the second house and, and decides at some point in the future that he wants the secondary unit to be his primary one because their family has shrunk, kids have gone off, he, the secondary one works better as his primary one. Now his three-bedroom, two-bath can be the long-term one that is available for long-term rentals for some folks working at Squaw or what have you, and the secondary one is his primary one, but, but now he can throw that up on VRBO during Christmas week because nobody wants to be there during Christmas week. So, you know, that, that's what I'm getting at, is I don't want to create that encumbrance on them in the future by saying only the primary one can be the short-term rental one. That's what I'm getting at.
Okay, I understood. So I think if we were to bring back an ordinance that were proposed, that one of the units on the property
Yeah.
is, is restricted to not having the short-term dwellings and leave it open as to which one it is, that it is, it sounds like that is what I'm hearing, the direction of the board.
I believe so, yeah. Jerry, your light is on. Did you have something additional to add?
No, I, I was just saying, that's, that was why I was suggesting continuing the public hearing, so that we can bring back, it's probably going to be a new subsection E that talks about rental of both the primary and the secondary. In those situations where both are rented, then only one of them can be rented short-term.
Do we think there is, um, I know there's a great deal of interest on the east end of the county on this. Do we think there's any opportunity to continue this to the 23rd when we're in Tahoe, or is that going to be too quick for these changes?
No, I think we can make those changes in that amount of time, and being up in Tahoe is probably just as much as benefit as everything, anything.
Okay, I would suggest that we bring this back then on the 23rd at a time certain and continue the public hearing to that date. Is that, does that meet your requirements, counsel?
Yes, yes.
Uh, do we have a time? We are, clerk of the board is checking times.
And while the clerk is checking times, just remind the board that this does not affect the area plan boundaries.
Right.
The area plan is separate. They have implementing regulations, and as soon as we're done with our laws, that we will be, um, bringing back an ordinance to comply with state law there.
But it does, um, in the east end of the county.
That is correct.
North Star, Marta, Squaw, Alpine, Donner Summit, south shore of Donner Lake.
I would actually prefer bringing it back on the 24th because that's the regular meeting.
Oh, okay. Uh, then we will bring it back on the 24th at a regular meeting. Megan, is there a?
So we have to do probably a nine forty to nine forty-five.
Okay, uh, this will be coming back to us then with some amended language at nine forty-five on October 24th here in Auburn. Uh, that would be a regular meeting, and we will then just continue the public hearing to that, uh, date and time. Any other action that the board needs to take on this, Jerry, or are you satisfied?
I'm satisfied.
I like to make sure our counsel is satisfied. Thank you all very much. Okay, we are now going to move to our nine forty timed item. This is a Community Development Resource Agency item relating to the Water Efficiency Landscape Implementation, otherwise known as the Welo, even though that doesn't start with an I. Maybe it's the Weli. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. I'm Crystal Jacobson with Planning Services Division, and the item before you today is, um, a Water Efficiency Landscape Ordinance, which is an ordinance in response to recent state law mandating that local agencies adopt a state model ordinance or equivalent to address, um, state water conservation. So with me today is Emily Setser. She's a, a new planner with us, and she has been leading this effort and will be presenting this item today.
Good morning. The Water Efficient Landscape Ordinance is a state-mandated regulation. There we go. And it has been actually in some form of existence for a while. It was introduced as the Water Conservation and Landscaping Act in 1990. In 2006, uh, it was tweaked to establish the Model Water Efficient Landscape Ordinance, or the Model Welo is the acronym for it. In 2015, during the drought, Governor Brown directed stricter updates to the Model Welo, and those went into effect by default on December 1st, 2015. So now it's up to local jurisdictions to decide, uh, whether to leave those regulations in by default or to adopt their own ordinances. The purpose of the Welo is to reduce the amount of water used for landscape irrigation across the state. Welo intends to do this by promoting water-efficient landscapes, preventing water waste, and increasing efficient irrigation. It sets turf limits and it incentivizes the use of gray water and recycled water. It applies to residential, commercial, industrial, and institutional public agency projects, but there are certain size thresholds for Welo to apply. So for new construction projects, the projects must include a landscape area equal to or greater than 500 square feet. For remodeled or rehabilitated projects, uh, they must include a landscape greater than 2,500 square feet in order for Welo to apply. The trigger for Welo to apply is that a project must require a building permit, a plan check, or a design review, and it must include landscaping as part of the project. So if the project does not include landscaping and is not otherwise required to, then Welo does not apply. I should also note that this, um, similar to the second dwelling unit or ordinance, does not apply to the Tahoe Basin. Welo sets turf limits, so this is a summary of the basic requirements of Welo. It sets turf limits, uh, and requires certain depths of composting and mulch in order to retain the moisture. It requires for most plants to use no or little summer water, and that is done via, uh, water budget calculations. It requires hydro zones, which are planting your plants by the amount of water use that they need. So your high-water use plants in one area, your low-water use plants in another area, so as not to over or underwater the plants. And it also requires automatic irrigation with moisture and rain sensor data. There's a lot of words on the screen, but really the gist of it is that the left side has fewer requirements. Um, these are the two paths for compliance. So the left side is the prescriptive compliance option. This is for smaller projects. Um, the Model Welo, I should note, had a size threshold for the prescriptive compliance option of 2,500 square feet for landscape areas, and staff has, um, increased this to just under 5,000 square feet to allow more projects, more smaller projects to take this path. And this path basically allows for the owner, uh, to self-certify that they meet these requirements, and it's easier to implement as well. The larger, the right side is the landscape documentation package, and that is for larger projects such as subdivisions, commercial projects, industrial projects. Uh, they do require a landscape architect sign-off, and there are more requirements, but most of our projects in the county and developers are already doing this because the landscape architects across the state are pretty used to this by now. Welo does allow for some extra water usage for special categories. So, uh, special landscape areas is what it calls these categories, and these include edible gardens, uh, anything irrigated with recycled water, including water features, active play areas like your parks and golf courses and sports fields, and then we've also added anything with low-impact development. So those get an extra water usage in the water budget calculations. It also incentivizes the use of gray water and rain water. Um, so any landscapes up to 5,000 or just under 5,000 square feet, they only have to comply with the irrigation components of the easier path, that prescriptive compliance option. Um, and we also increased this size threshold too, to further incentivize these alternate water sources. Welo will live in chapter 15. Um, we are, chapter 17, the zoning ordinance will refer to chapter 15, and as part of this process, we're also updating the landscape design guidelines to make it consistent with the ordinance and to, uh, further implement public assistance and guidance. The Planning Commission considered the Welo on August 24th. The commission voted, uh, six to one to forward a recommendation for approval to the board. We also attended all of the MACs except to West Placer. We were on the same circuit as the secondary dwelling unit ordinance, um, and received no major comments or concerns or questions. So today, staff recommends that the board find the proposed code amendments to be categorically exempt under the California Environmental Quality Act guideline, section 15307, and to adopt an ordinance to amend Placer County Code, chapter 15, to amend chapter 17, and to adopt the updated landscape design guidelines.
Thank you, Emily. I'll see if we have any questions or comments from the board before we open the public hearing. Supervisor Duran, your light is on.
Yeah, what was the concern of the lone, um, planning commissioner that voted against the Welo?
Uh, that was Commissioner Moss, and he was concerned about increasing, the increasing number of state-mandated regulations and the effects on personal property rights.
Right. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from any member of the board before I open the public hearing? I see none. I will open the public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to comment or ask a question on this agenda item? I see no one here in Auburn, anyone in Tahoe. I see no one in Tahoe. I will close the public hearing and bring it back to the board. We have a motion, Duran, second, Holmes?
Um, Supervisor Montgomery?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Um, I just wanted to point out, um, it wasn't on this recommendation slide, but the, the landscaping, um, design guideline section, that's a resolution, and we wanted to point out that the ordinance, um, applies to chapter 15 and chapter 17, and then the resolution applies to, we should have put that on that slide.
So, uh, what, uh, we are acting on then is on page two of our agenda, item 3A, 1A, B, and C.
Correct.
Correct.
Thank you.
Are we clear on that? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Great job, Emily. Thank you. Okay, we are going to move now to our 1015 timed item. Uh, this is a set of treasure tax collector items. Um, uh, I'm gonna let Janine take us through this because it's, uh, a lot of text.
Yes.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good morning, Chairwoman Montgomery, members of the board. Uh, before you is an item related to the county's Empower-Pace Program. In 2010, the board approved that program. Since that time, over 2,100 projects have been completed and 75, over $75 million in financing have been provided to residential and non-residential property owners to provide financing for renewable generation, energy efficiency, and water conservation projects. Um, I might also note, um, that we have had over 470 contractors participate in the program, and it's estimated that 1,500 jobs have been created as a result of the program, most of that since, uh, 2013. The way that this financing is provided is that the financing is secured by an assessment lien on the property, and the repayment is made on the property tax bill. Funding is provided by the purchase of a bond issued by the Placer County Public Financing Authority, which is purchased for the county treasurer's investment pool. The public financing authority then loans the bond proceeds to the county for administration and financing of the program. What you have before you today is a refinancing of the bonds purchased by the treasury in order to sell them in the public marketplace. Uh, staff has been in consultation with Steeple, uh, um, brokerage firm, and with its financial advisor, Del Rio Advisors, Bond Counsel, Jones Hall, and, uh, other county staff regarding the opportunity to refinance these and sell them out of the county treasury, if you will. Um, and, uh, the program was originally designed to do this in order to free up additional funds within the treasury. So before you today, uh, are certain actions related to the authorization of this refinancing. The first of which is to hold a public hearing to consider authorization of the refinancing, and the second is to make a finding of significant public benefit related to the refinancing. The second item after, um, close, uh, closure of the public hearing is to adopt a resolution authorizing the issuance of, uh, the, the refunding bonds. Uh, you have a resolution attached to your item, and it describes the various authorizations related to the 2017, uh, refinancing and the issuance of a Series A and a Series B bond. Um, and it also authorizes the loan agreement that I previously described between the financing authority and the county, and it gives authorizations to officers to take, uh, officers of the county to take actions related to the transaction. Um, and that, uh, it also indicates that the bonds will only be offered for sale to qualified accredited investors. Um, and that, uh, requirement will follow the bonds if they're resold in the market. It's called a traveling big-boy letter that has to accompany, um, the future sale of the bonds. Um, it also is, uh, the, uh, resolution author, also authorizes, uh, the treasure tax collector to act as trustee or to appoint a trustee, and also to determine whether it is beneficial from a financial standpoint to label the bonds with a green bond designation, uh, of, for the sale and marketing of the bonds. And, uh, we would do that in consult, in consultation with Steeple, um, the, uh, the broker. Um, and it also authorizes, um, the, uh, hiring of Jones Hall as Bond Counsel and Disclosure Counsel, Del Rio Advisors as Municipal Advisor, Goodwin Consulting as the county's admin, Assessment Administrator, who's required to do certain calculations, and authorizes the county executive officer to execute the agreements with those firms. And, um, it also gives authorization for the treasure tax collector to waive, uh, redemption rights with respect to the bonds. So in other words, since the treasury holds those bonds, um, this would create a call on those bonds, and the treasurer must waive the right, uh, for, uh, calling, um, in order to consent to calling the bonds. With that, I'd be glad to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions from any member of the board? Supervisor Yular?
Uh, I don't have a question on, uh, the action that we're being asked to take, but kind of in general, when the Empower program was established, the county agreed to, um, to kind of kick this off, funded some money, uh, establish the rate, uh, to make sure that we're covering, covering our administrative costs. Just kind of wanted, uh, an update on how we're doing in terms of the cost neutrality of this program, uh, to us as a co- this program to us as a county, and yet the success of the program at market rates.
So that, that cost recovery mechanism was based on cost recovery over time.
Right.
The fact of the matter is, is that most of the costs are incurred upfront during the underwriting of the individual assessments. This transaction, one of the thresholds, and I really should have mentioned that, two things. One, we will need to come back to the board one more time for approval of the disclosure document. After the public hearing today, we have to wait 60 days before we can do that. In the meantime, we're monitoring the market. So one of the financial thresholds that we are watching for is that we are going to be able to generate a premium sufficient to offset the unrecovered costs that we would otherwise have covered over time. So in the meantime, we continue to recover the cost, and it, from that standpoint, when you know that there's a lag between expenditure and cost recovery, the program continues to be self-supporting.
Yeah. And that's exactly what I was gonna add, because obviously, the cost recovery over time has to be baked into the earnings on the net sale.
Right.
So that...
Yeah. All of the advisors that I mentioned, that we have been having discussions with up to date, are well aware of that, and they know that that has to be hard baked into the calculations, and that is one of the main thresholds for pulling the pin. And we have up to the time of the sale, when we actually are receiving the bids and orders for the bonds, to say, you know what, these bids and orders aren't coming in where we expected, we're not gonna do this.
But we have already successfully done one round with a private...
With Five Star Bank?
Right.
That's right. That's right. And Five Star, we may include this, Five Star is considering whether there might be some gains to be made for them to sell on that. So yes, we have done this once already with Five Star.
All right. Thank you.
Supervisor Wegant.
Just kind of curious, Janine, about the green bond designation thing. I'm assuming that there's some technical requirement that the monies would generally have to be invested in a green manner, so the other part of the decision part, discussion, I'm assuming that that has to do with the marketability of the bonds and how would that work?
Yes, there's, there's an established set of green bond principles, and that's what we'll be measuring against. Otherwise, you can, you can't claim straight up green bonds, but maybe shades of green. So that's, we will be determining that based on kind of two parameters that are always, not necessarily juxtaposed, but need to check each other, and one is marketing, and the other is accurate disclosure. So again, that's something that's part of an ongoing conversation with the investment advisor.
Thanks.
Supervisor Duran.
Yes, Janine, thank you for bringing this forward. My question concerns risk. Are we, by going out and having the bond folks go ahead and buy these bonds, are we reducing any risk on the county if in the event some of these things fail?
You, whoever the bondholder is, is always incurring risk, so right now, it would be the treasury. However, part of the, you know, part of the feasibility of looking at this was collections, and as tax collector who collects these assessments, we're very familiar with these statistics. The statistics show that the delinquency rates and default rates with our assessments are lower than our overall delinquency rates, and we're diligent on anything that's late following up. So I, the risk is, I would, I would categorize it as marginal, but certainly, when you're moving the bonds from the treasury holding them to an outside third party, you're always, you're always shifting risk. Whoever is holding those bonds is the one who's assuming the risk. That's the reason for the return on investment, to compensate for that risk.
Thank you.
So, you know, and the relatively low interest rate, these are taxable bonds, and the relatively low interest rate is a reflection of the low level of risk.
Okay. I see no other questions from the board, so I'm going to open the public hearing. And any member of the public is welcome to ask questions, make comments on this item. Would anyone like to question or comment on this item? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing, and this is a roll call. Jerry, is this something that we can take in one action?
Yes. The motion to adopt the resolution.
Okay.
Second.
Motion Holmes, Second Wegant, this is a roll call.
Duran.
Yes.
Wegant.
Yes.
Holmes.
Euler.
Montgomery.
Yes. Okay, we are now going to adjourn as the Placer County Board of Supervisors and convene as the Placer County Public Finance Authority, and we will be taking up Item 5A, Placer County Public Finance Authority, refinancing and sale of bonds. Janine Windushausen.
So I will dispense with reiterating everything that I already said. The resolution that you have before you here is similar, but not exactly the same, so I will just quickly iterate the, the main points of this resolution. Again, it's to authorize the refunding of the bonds, to authorize the related loan agreements, and to approve the sale to qualified institutional investors, and to authorize hiring Stiefel Nicholas and Company as the initial purchaser and underwriter of the bonds, authorizes officers and staff to take necessary and appropriate actions related to the transaction, and again, the waiver of the prepayment rights by the treasurer, who is the current bondholder, and then also authorizes the treasurer to determine a green bond designation. And again, we'll be doing that based on the financial merit.
Any questions or comments from any board member on this item? Okay, I see none. This is not a public hearing. This is, however, a roll call. Is there any public comment on this? Seeing no public comment, what's the pleasure of the board?
Please.
Have a motion, Holmes, Second Wegant, roll call, please.
Duran.
Yes.
Wegant.
Yes.
Holmes.
Euler.
Montgomery.
Yes, thank you. We will now adjourn as the Placer County Public Finance Authority and reconvene as the Placer County Board of Supervisors. Thank you very much, Janine Windushausen. Much appreciated. We're now going to move to our 10:30 timed item. This is a county executive item. This will be a cannabis policy update. We will be receiving an informational update and being asked to provide staff direction on two talking points. Becky Regan and Josh Hunsinger presenting. Welcome.
And good morning, Chair Montgomery, members of the board. Becky Regan from the County Executive Office, as you mentioned, joined by Josh Hunsinger, our Placer County Ad Commissioner. So staff are here today to seek your board's guidance on whether to move forward with modifying the county's current ordinance in order to allow for medicinal cannabis research and testing here in Placer County, along with your guidance on whether to pursue advocacy at the federal level to expand federally sanctioned medicinal cannabis research opportunities. Your board will recall the August 15th discussion on this topic, following Supervisor Holmes' presentation on workshop findings regarding a cottage industry licensing provision for patients using medicinal cannabis. At that time, your board expressed interest in exploring a high-level, a high-tech lab of some sort, to do the kind of work that doesn't involve sales or dispensing a product, but that would research the use of cannabis as a source to treat various ailments. Your board also provided guidance to staff that you were not interested in facilitating the broader scope of commercial cannabis activity, absent clear and compelling data, that there was some sort of well-quantified evidence of unmet need within Placer County. Staff with the assistance of county council explored the opportunities for this type of operation and are here today to seek your direction before progressing. So again, with the assistance of council, staff conducted additional research on current federal law and the existing state licensing structure that Placer County must work within to allow any type of research lab testing. As your board recalls, cannabis regulation currently falls into a gap of inconsistency between federal and state legal frameworks. It remains a Schedule I drug under the Controlled Substances Act of 1970, and thus remains illegal at the federal level. However, it is considered legal under California state law if a specific activity complies with state and local licensing requirements and is allowed for under local land use policy. Due to its Schedule I status, research at the federal level is highly controlled, but is not entirely prohibited. A pathway for conducting research was established immediately following establishment of the Controlled Services Act approximately 50 years ago. To obtain cannabis legally, researchers must apply to the Food and Drug Administration, the Drug Enforcement Administration, and the National Institute on Drug Abuse, which administers the only legal source of cannabis for federally sanctioned research through the University of Mississippi's School of Pharmacy. Researchers wishing to conduct cannabis research must register and obtain a Controlled Substances license for cannabis from the DEA to conduct the research. They must submit an investigational new drug application to the FDA and obtain the cannabis from a DEA-approved distributor. The National Institute of Drug Abuse indicates there are approximately 28 active grants for research into the possible medicinal benefits of cannabis in six disease categories. As for independently funded marijuana research, the federal government has cleared 16 cannabis projects since 1999, 13 of them conducted at the University of California in San Diego. Because of the current limitation on those wishing to conduct medicinal research, these three controlling agencies, the FDA, DEA, and NIH, have all published policy documents in support of expanding research quality supply of cannabis and research opportunities. However, staff note that these policy statements were published in 2016, and that the new administration has not taken any further actions on them since that time, either expanding or rescinding those policy positions. As your board is aware, our federal advocates will be here working with Placer County staff on the 2018 federal legislative platform this Thursday, and they have indicated to us that there are opportunities to advance and advocate for expanding these research opportunities, should your board wish to pursue that path. The final comment of note for your board on the federal status involves current legislative proposals to advance the study around cannabis to determine if the 40 states that have decriminalized or passed laws allowing patient access for medicinal use are on the right path. The most recent is the Meds Act introduced by Senator Orrin Hatch. The next two slides provide details on the proposed act, but among other things, it would encourage more research on the potential uses of cannabis by streamlining the research registration process without imposing a scheduling determination by the Drug Enforcement Agency. It would also make cannabis more available for legitimate scientific and medicinal research and the commercial production of any FDA-approved drugs derived from the product, and it would also retain important checks to protect against the diversion of, or abuse of, the controlled substance. This bipartisan bill was introduced in September and has been referred to the Senate Judiciary Committee, and it is awaiting its first hearing. So at this point, I'll turn it over to Josh, who will walk through the state, the state framework. There is one more slide, but it is again just some summaries of the Med Act provisions.
Good morning. As your board is aware, California has had many versions of state law, starting in 1996 with the Compassionate Use Act, i.e. Prop 215, and more recently with the Medical Marijuana Regulation and Safety Act, which was then changed to the Medical Cannabis Regulation and Safety Act, followed by the passage by the voters of Prop 64 or the Adult Use of Marijuana Act. Finally, this past June, SB 94, the Medical and Adult Use Cannabis Regulation and Safety Act, which merged the adult use and the medical, or medicinal as it's now called, use, this just this past June into one synchronized law. There are currently 20 different license types for commercial cannabis activity, as defined by state law, identified in the state, in the law, as you can see on this slide, including the Type 8 license, which is called Testing Laboratory. This is the definition of a Type 8 Testing Laboratory, which is a laboratory or facility or entity in the state that offers and performs tests of cannabis or cannabis products that is both of the following. One, accredited by an accrediting body that is independent from all other persons involved in commercial cannabis activity in the state, and licensed by the Bureau of Cannabis Control within the Department of Consumer Affairs. And again, just to reiterate, there is, within that licensing framework, there is no specific license for a medical research laboratory. So one of the requirements within the state law for these testing laboratories, these Type 8 licenses, is ISO 17025 accreditation, and that's not something that's just given in general, but it's specific to a number of different types of tests. So this slide demonstrates just the full scope of what all the accreditation has to cover. The ISO accreditation is performed by independent third-party certifiers who verify, among other things, the personnel qualifications of the lab, the testing procedures and methodologies, and the equipment used by the lab to make sure it's all up to that standard. In looking to the board's interest previously expressed in August, the only option to allow any type of cannabis-related research would be through this Type 8 testing license. However, it's important to note that this license type would also allow testing of cannabis for commercial distribution. That's the primary intent of this license category. It's part of that entire supply chain for commercial distribution, which seems to be in conflict with previous board direction.
So that concludes staff's presentation. We're here to answer any questions that your board may have, but we are again seeking your direction on those two aspects, whether to move forward with developing any kind of ordinance under the state licensing structure Josh described, and whether or not to pursue any federal advocacy.
Thank you. Very clear. Supervisor Euler.
So the, the slides that you had discussing the federal research testing as it exists today, and then what is in the Meds Act. So as it exists today, there is an avenue that's available that would meet the intent of this board as expressed in our previous discussion on this item, without the board having to take any steps to modify our zoning ordinance, correct?
Yes, we did look at our zoning ordinance and identify that there is a definition for medical research within the zoning ordinance.
So our, in order for somebody to accomplish at least what this board expressed as our desire, and that is true research into the medicinal qualities, if there are any, of marijuana, that can be accomplished without our board having to take any action?
I would, I think I defer to council on how the state law interacts with that federal grant of...
The state law is enabling legislation that enables a separate activity.
Yes.
Not an activity that this board has ever expressed an interest in.
Correct.
What I'm asking about is what our board specifically expressed an interest in, and that is testing for medicinal purposes, testing marijuana for its true, just like drugs get tested all across the country every day, that could take place in Placer County without this board having to take any additional action.
You would have to go through that somewhat cumbersome federal process that I described...
The board doesn't have to, a private provider would have to.
Correct.
We would have...
We would have to give direction to staff to move forward with that.
Why? Why couldn't a private provider engage the federal research testing process as it is structured today? If a group of researchers wanted to get together and apply to the FDA and the DEA and go through, granted, it sounds like a cumbersome process. Do anybody, you indicated sixteen permits have been issued for this since 1999, is that what I heard you say?
That's, yes, that's what the research found.
Did they require any kind of local jurisdiction chartering or sponsoring or anything like that, or did they just go and engage the federal process and get it done?
I believe the latter, but I will at this point engage counsel, I think, on their understanding.
Yes.
Yes, the county does have a land use category for medical research.
Right. So, given our existing ordinances, anybody who wanted to go and do what the Board of Supervisors said we would like to see happen in Placer County is free to go and pursue that today. Granted, it's a cumbersome process, but it's not incumbent upon this board to change anything in our current ordinances in order to allow for what the majority of the board expressed at the last meeting to happen to happen.
Conducting medical research under the federal law would not require any further action by the board.
Okay. So what I want to clarify, so it seems to me that then, in furtherance of the board's interest in this item, I appreciate you bringing forward Senator Hatch's bill, and this really is where we, in furtherance of the direction provided by our board at the last meeting, this is where we really might want to focus, and that is, how do we reduce the federal encumbrance on the medicinal testing of marijuana so that, whether it's Placer County or Solano County or any other county, anybody who wants to actually engage in true research has the ability to do so more readily, as opposed to having to go through this sixteen permits in twenty-six years or whatever this has been the deal on. So everything relating to all the rest of this, as it regards the enabling legislation for commercial activity around recreational marijuana, none of that really has anything to do with what the board had discussed and in fact clarified at the previous meeting, where a few of us board members specifically said, no, we're not interested in laboratories testing marijuana for its THC content and all those things that would facilitate the commercialization of the marijuana, what we said was the true medical research. So the rest is, though informative, none of that's necessary for us to do.
Given your board's guidance, we see that would exclude the state approach.
Okay. All right. That's all the questions I have. Thank you.
Supervisor Wiegand.
And maybe the mirror image of Kirk's question, would an applicant have to go through the federal process to get licensed regardless of what action this board took?
To do federally sanctioned medicinal research, yes.
Yes.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Any questions or comments from any member of the public on this? Please come forward.
Switching hats, so you understand I'm not speaking on behalf of my previous client. I am currently, and have been for a number of years, a volunteer with Tahoe Truckee Future Without Drug Dependencies, referred to generally as FORWARD, and it's endeavoring to ensure that drug use is not part of the culture of our communities, especially with our young people. And in regard to that, in looking at this particular description, I applaud the effort that was done by staff to both outline the issue, some of the minefields that are still out there, and I would, again, just encourage you to remain wary of state-level legislation that in some way contradicts or tries to subvert federal law, because as I recall from high school and college physics, or physics, civics, physics is a whole different thing, civics class, federal trumps, sorry about that pun, state law. And with that said, I would hope that any Schedule I drug that's on the DEA Schedule I list would be treated as such by this county until such time as it's deemed to be Schedule II or something else by the federal government. As you know, there are efforts underway to expand the research opportunities, but that particular legislation calls out and carves out any discussion of rescheduling. So just so you know that, as a matter of fact. Bullet Nine within the Page Three of the staff report is absolutely critical, its core, to maintain the community character, and that's the continued prohibition on all other commercial cannabis activities. We applaud that stance. We hope that you maintain it with strength and conviction. And finally, the legitimate scientific research that's being proposed is important. It's always important to advance the knowledge of science and medicine, and so I'm not speaking in opposition to your efforts to seek ways to make it more efficient, and in point of fact thereby effective, in doing the type of research that is crucial to having a scheduled discussion. At this point, at very best, it's premature to have a rescheduled discussion at the federal level, in my opinion. And with the DEA having such a strong and tight control on where research-based marijuana can be obtained for medical research, it becomes a real limiting factor. So your efforts to expand that would be prudent. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Any other questions or comments on this agenda item? There is no one in Tahoe except my district aide, who I do not believe is going to be commenting on this. She's shaking her head no. So I will bring it back to the board for any questions or comments. Supervisor Yuler.
Madam Chair, I just want to say I appreciate the work that staff did on this item and the deeper understanding of what the federal impediments are. I would encourage our board, as we look at our legislative platform for 2018, knowing that the Senate probably will not be acting on this bill in this session, that we look at possibly including support for S 1803 in our legislative platform for next year.
Any other questions or comments? I would just like to echo Supervisor Yuler's comments and really say thank you very much for taking our direction, going out, investigating it thoroughly, coming back to us with, you know, both the can't do it under this framework from the state perspective because it doesn't meet our intent, but also outlining a potential path forward to get to some appropriate and proper scientific research around cannabis. I believe Supervisor Yuler is correct that this is not an action that we would want to take to try to become a federally sanctioned medical medicinal, I can say this, cannabis testing and research facility or county, but I do think we should take a serious look at supporting the Meds Act, 1803, and making sure that this kind of research does happen because frankly, we've had decades and decades and decades of not really doing research on this, so we don't know if this is the worst thing since Satan or the best thing since sliced bread. And frankly, ignorance is not a good platform to move forward under. So I would strongly encourage that we do include this in our legislative platform moving forward, and again, just want to thank you both sincerely for all your efforts around this because it's a difficult conversation to have, but it's one that we're going to be continuing to have probably every few months for the rest of our lives. So, thank you. Did you need any more direction than that? Oh, Supervisor Wiegand.
Yeah, so my comments want to be taken as an add-on to both my colleagues' comments and in that Mike and Richard, our federal advocates, are coming out this week. I would recommend that in light of all of the discussion, actually do some maybe brainstorm types of discussions with them to get some input from them as to, I think our goal here is fairly clear. They might have some really good suggestions as to how we might interact with the federal process and try to get something that does fit our needs in a more streamlined manner because we're pretty good at that line of work and that might yield some good results.
Thank you. All right, seeing no other questions or comments, thank you both very much.
Thank you.
We will now move to our department items. We're going to start with Agenda Item Number Seven. This is a Health and Human Services item, Negotiated Net Amount and Drug Medi-Cal Multi-Year Revenue Agreement. Wow, that's a mouthful. Welcome, Amy Ellis.
Hi, thanks for having me back. I am, good morning, Madam Chairman and members of the board. Yes, I am talking to you about Substance Use Treatment, which leads to reduce crime and enhance public safety, as well as saving jail bed days and healthcare costs and other costs associated with child welfare. We are requesting you to approve a three-year revenue agreement with the state for drug Medi-Cal services in the amount of $10,555,566 for the period of July 1 through June 30, 2020, and to authorize the Director of HHS to sign subsequent amendments not to exceed five percent. This revenue agreement requires no additional county general funds, that is 100% funded with federal funding. So this is something we go into every three years. It's mandated for the county to serve the Medi-Cal population who has substance use needs and by offering the appropriate level of care as determined by the American Society of Addiction Medicine, also known as ASAM. The county had contracts with our providers to offer this continuum of care that ranges from outpatient medication-assisted treatment to residential care. Our substance use treatment providers served over 1,700 people in Placer County last fiscal year, and those numbers keep rising. Historically, this contract with DHCS also included, and it's actually in the title, another substance use federal funding source, the negotiated net amount, but this year they actually separated out those two revenue sources, so this is just about the drug Medi-Cal funding. We will bring back the other revenue if it is required to this board. So that is the item that I recommend approval for the federally-funded revenue contract that requires no county general fund.
All right. Any questions or comments from any member of the board? I see none. Any questions or comments from any member of the public? I see none. Thank you, Amy. Very well done. What's the pleasure of the board? Have a motion, Holmes, second Duran. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you very much. We're now going to move to Item 8A. This is a Public Works and Facilities item being presented by Rob Unholz, County Finance Administration Building related. Welcome.
Good morning, Sheriff Montgomery, members of the board. Today, we're here requesting your approval of plans and specifications and authorization to solicit bids for the Finance Administration Carpet Replacement Phase Two Project with an installation cost of just under $460,000. Projects included in Department of Public Works and Facilities 2017-18 Final Budget Capital Projects Fund. The Finance Administration Building was built in 1999, and with the exception of the floor covering replaced in Phase One, the remainder of the broadloom carpet and vinyl composition tile is seventeen years old and well beyond its useful life. Phase Two will replace the remaining areas on the first floor, the entirety of the second floor, with the exception of some of the flooring related to the upcoming assessor's remodel. Phase Two will match the carpet tile and the rubber tile installed in Phase One, and installation will occur during evenings and weekends to allow for regular business hours and operations by all of the departments in the fab. In order to proceed with this project, it's requested that your board approve plans and specs and authorize staff to solicit bids, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions or comments for Rob? Any questions or comments from any member of the public on this item? Seeing none, pleasure of the board. Motion, Wiegand, second Holmes. All those in favor? Aye. Any abstentions? Okay. Please note that Supervisor Yuler was out of the room. Thank you, Rob. All right. We're now going to move to 8B, Placer Commuter Express Agreement Award. Will Garner presenting. Welcome, Will.
Thank you. And yes, this morning I have a recommendation to award a contract to MV Transportation to operate Placer Commuter Express. Placer Commuter Express has been operating since 2004. We've had one contractor during that time under three different contracts. That contractor, Amador Stage Line, decided not to propose this time. But we did receive three proposals, and they were competitive, but we had a five-person panel that unanimously chose MV Transportation. They were not only the best proposal, they were also the least expensive of the three proposals, and they are, it's a three-year contract that we're recommending with two extension years. Something we're doing new now is we're actually getting pricing for the extension years so we don't have to negotiate that three years out. We have a better handle on that as we go into those years. So when this, what's interesting about this contract is that it is a long-haul operation, really, so there's a long-distance run from Auburn to Sacramento in the morning and a return in the afternoon. It doesn't run all day, it's just for commuters. So one issue is where do you store the buses? And there's pluses and minuses to storing them in Auburn versus downtown Sacramento. For all these years, for the last several years, we've had the ability to use Amador Stage Line's yard in downtown Sacramento on C Street to store the buses because it was only a mile from the route, so it was very convenient. With them no longer in the picture on this one, we had to rely on the yards or the properties that were owned by the proposers for now on their, what they proposed. And another thing that's happened is labor has increased over the years, so the cost of labor is more than actually driving and adding mileage to the buses in the case of our all three proposals we received. So we asked them to submit two options in the proposals, one priced for storing the buses in downtown Sacramento and one priced for just bringing the buses basically empty back up to Auburn in the morning and then driving them back down to complete the route up the hill to Placer County in the afternoon, and then storing the buses overnight in Auburn where they would begin the day the next morning. Again, in the case of all three and the proposal that we're recommending today, it was far more, it ends up being more expensive to leave the buses in downtown Sacramento. And the reason is it extends the shift times for all four of the drivers who are driving the buses that day, and not only is it more time on that day, but it takes their hours beyond forty in a week, and so they have to have more drivers to complete the service. And there's not a lot of drivers available these days. It's a problem we're all having, is the ability to actually find qualified drivers to drive our services. So they placed a premium on actually having that extended shift times that results from storing the buses in Sacramento in the midday, costs $82,000 more per year based on the first-year pricing, where by adding those mileage, that mileage adds $53,000 on our side of the cost. I should mention here, the costs of fuel and maintenance is on the county. The county maintains the buses with our staff, and we fuel the buses with our, at our fueling station here in Auburn. So it pencils out to be about $29,000 cheaper overall for the combined contract costs, maintenance and fuel costs, and depreciation costs to have the buses actually transported back to Auburn midday. So that is the contract that we're recommending. The contract actually has the option to change that at any time the numbers change, for whatever reason. Fuel gets very expensive or something like that happens. So happy to take questions, but the recommendation, as we have it written in the staff report, is to authorize the Director of Public Works and Facilities, or his destiny, to execute an agreement with MV Transportation. an agreement with MV Transportation for the operation of Placer Commuter Express, beginning on November 1st of this year, in about a month, through October, through as long as October 31, 31, 2020, with two years' extension options. And there's the pricing for the five years in the staff report. I won't go through each of those years. But basically, it totals $2,034,383, or an average of $406,000 per year for the operation, which is, by the way, also we determined to be within the market price. It's very much in line with what we, our current contract that we have.
Thank you, Will. Supervisor Euler.
Yeah, Will, the current operation is just a, a, a one-way operation, right? It's just picking people up, up here and taking them down there, and then the vice versa in the evening.
Correct.
Did we ever look at the feasibility of trying to make this a two-way ridership, both morning and evening, given what it is that we're looking at here on bringing the buses back up?
You know, we have looked at that a lot in the past, and it, one of the things it does, it actually extends the, the operating time quite a bit because the driver now has to, you know, be in service. And so that is a consideration, is that extra added cost. And then the-
But would the extra, does the extra ridership more than offset the cost?
No, it would not. The fare revenue would not-
And we don't anticipate that over time, much like with this service, which is now very well utilized, over time, we don't anticipate that ridership growing? Is it just out of the normal hours? Is that the issue?
It's, it's the, the reverse commute to Placer County is just not centralized. It's so spread out. If at some point in the future, there was, was a reason to take one or two or all four of those buses and do that, there was one place or one or two places maybe to centralize that trip, it would make sense. But it's just, it would be, you know, going back up the hill, Roseville, Rockland, Lincoln, et cetera, to drop people off. And it just, it's a very long trip and probably not desirable for the reverse commute.
I see no other questions or comments from the board. Any member of the public have any questions or comments? All right, seeing none, I'll bring this back to the board. Motion Ygant, I'm going to give the second to Euler on that one. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you, Will. We will now move to item 8C, Placer County Dial Ride Contract Amendment Number Three with MV Transportation.
Thank you, yes, also MV Transportation. MV Transportation's been our contractor for Dial Ride for four years, and this request today is to approve an amendment that will extend them to their fifth and final year of this contract. And it is a 6.1% increase in their cost from the current year. It would begin on November 1st and go through October 31st of next year. And during that time, the next couple of months, we would issue or begin working on the RFP, Request for Proposal, to get out, to do a new solicitation for a new contract that would begin in about a year from now. So this, this request is to extend the contract. It is a 6.1% increase over, in cost, which MV attributes to the, the higher cost of labor, the cost of recruiting, retaining, and retraining drivers and on all of that. Even with that 6.1%, I noted, went back and looked, we're still at a price that is about the same as we were paying five years ago with another operator. So it's kind of going from a low base that we started with, and MV is able to offer that because they have other contracts in the area that they're able to use their resources and supply that good cost to us. So with that, we're asking for authorization for the Director of Public Works to execute Amendment Number Three to the Contract 1159 with MV Transportation to operate Placer County Dial Ride in the amount not to exceed $1,103,766.4 for the period of November 1, 2017 through October 31, 2018.
Supervisor Euler.
Well, I have long had a concern about this particular item and its cost. And given that this is the final year of this contract, you just indicated that we were going to be looking, going out to bid. Prior to going out to bid, I would encourage us to take a good look at what the same service would be if we simply offered vouchers through Uber or Lyft to the people who currently use our Dial Ride service. We set up some kind of a voucher program, let's let the private sector take care of it, because as I'm looking at these vehicle hourly fees, having utilized both of those services in the past, I can pretty much guarantee we're going to come in utilizing Uber or Lyft or any other private rideshare-type service under where this is. So, and those are point-to-point, it's from home to doctor's office, it's from wherever to wherever. So rather than the traditional, let's go out to bid on a big old contract like that, let's take a good hard look at whether the private sector might help us meet that need.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Any questions or comments from any member of the public? Seeing none, what's the pleasure of the board? Sounded like Euler and Ygant. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Will, thank you very much. We're now going to move to item 8D, Tahoe Truckee Area Regional Transit, Placer County Transit, and Road Maintenance.
Yes, this is the annual claim for local transportation funds from the Placer County Transportation Planning Agency. These are the primary source of funds that we use to fund our transit services in the state of California, actually. These funds come from one-quarter cent of the retail sales tax, and in the case of these funds, they're apportioned, they remain in, in the source, so within Placer County, but then they're allocated to the cities and the county based on population. And that's per the Transportation Development Act law. And so in this case, we divide, well, every year, we divide the funds up into three different pots, if you will. One for Placer County Transit, Tahoe Truckee Area Regional Transit, and then Road Maintenance. And we have the amounts in the staff report, and we're asking for the board to adopt a resolution to execute the fiscal year 2017-18 LTF claim from the PCTPA to allocate $5,797,482 in LTF funds to Placer County Transit, Tahoe Truckee Area Regional Transit, and Road Maintenance for fiscal year 1718.
Any questions or comments from any member of the board? Seeing none, questions or comments from any member of the public? Seeing none, what's the pleasure of the board? Motion Holmes, second Duran. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Supervisor Euler, I'm going to take your silence for a second. Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Motion carries. You would carry the day, it's true. All right, we are now going to move to Agenda Items 9A and B. These are Sheriff's Office items. We're going to begin with Item A, Tri-Bridge Offender 360 Jail Management System. Mark Jacobini and Brett Wood presenting.
Morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Mr. Bosch, Mr. Carden, Mark Jacobini, the Placer County Sheriff's Office. First item, we are requesting you, your approval of a change order to a contract with Tri-Bridge Withholdings of Tampa, Florida, to amend the original statement of work in the amount of $86,200 for a revised contract total of $1,951,934, and authorize the purchasing manager to sign all the required documents. Funding is available in our final budget, and this is, just to clarify, the Tri-Bridge Offender 360 is the new jail management system that should be coming online in March of 2018.
Brief report. Any questions or comments from any member of the board? I see none. Any member of the public have any questions or comments on this agenda item? See none. What's the pleasure of the board? Motion Holmes, second Ygant. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you very much. We are now going to move to Item 9B, Employer Provided Meals at the Auburn and South Placer Detention Facilities.
Yes, ma'am. 9B is actually a procurement item, as it's a multi-department item, so Brett Wood, the purchasing manager, will introduce the item. The sheriff being the primary customer, I'll then answer any questions that the board might have.
Thank you.
Good morning, Supervisors. Thank you very much. The request today is to request from your board the authorization to approve a one-year contract renewal with multiple firms to provide prepared meals for employees that are assigned to a fixed post basis at the correctional facilities, and for the time period of October 3rd of this year through September 30th of next year, in the aggregate amount of $240,000. And these funds are currently included in both the Sheriff's Office and the Probation Office final budgets. It's been approved by your board. For background information for your board, this service, based on long-term staffing models, or long, based on staffing models and long-term business practices with both the Sheriff's Office and the Probation Department, fixed post staff have been, are required to stay within the facility during their entire work shift. And over the course of many years, they have been provided an employer meal. This is currently part of the Memorandum of Understanding, Sections 14.2 and 11.04, where with department head approval and the county CEO's approval, an employer-provided meal is, is provided to those staff. Prior to June of 2014, that was provided through the Probation Office, running the Corrections Food Service Program. That was done in a cafeteria-style approach, and it was difficult to manage the quantity, the usage, the, there were multiple issues with that. So around June of 2014, we went out and we did a request for qualifications where we sought the assistance of outside vendors to provide prepared meals. So defined meals, defined cost, very specifically organized and prepared. That was presented to your board in June of 2014, and it reduced the cost that we were spending on those services. At that point, we requested your board's approval for three one-year periods and, and had a dollar amount of $225,000 annually. Those contracts have expired as of September 30th of this year. At this time, they were, well, when we requested that $225,000 amount, it was based upon the existing staffing models and the existing vendor costs for those meals. Over the three years, some of those costs have increased, and we've also added additional staff, in addition to which the Probation Office has begun to utilize this contract based on the closing of the Corrections Kitchen. At this point, we're requesting $245,000, $240,000 in the aggregate amount for the one-year period to establish contracts with these firms to continue to provide this service. That concludes the staff presentation. We're happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions or comments from any member of the board on this item? Supervisor Euler.
Yeah, I, obviously, having pulled this item from consent previously, had the opportunity to speak with the Sheriff's Department representatives about the, what is now the, the practice, and I guess has been the practice, on this meal issue. Had a conversation with counsel about it and what discontinuing that practice might mean. Jerry, would you share with my colleagues, you know, kind of the nuts and bolts of our conversation about this practice and where we are with this at this point?
Well, this is primarily a management decision as to how to provide services at the jail, rather than a benefit to the employees as a benefit to management in, in terms of operating the jail. Because of the security concerns at the jail, sheriff does not allow staff at the jail to take a break for lunches. They have to remain at their desks and remain available for work while they're doing that. In return for that operational decision, the Sheriff's Office has provided meals for those employees so that they can eat while remaining in service during that whole time. As Brett Wood mentioned originally, by cafeteria plan, but now by a vendor plan, it, it allows a reduction of cost, but it, and it fulfills the operational purpose to keep the, the staff on staff in case an emergency arises and they have to be called back to duty.
Not wanting to get in the business of trying to micromanage the Sheriff's Department and how they run their jail, I understand the need to be able to provide the meals to those folks that are required to, to stay on post during their meal period and no longer have the concerns that I previously had with the item.
Thank you. Supervisor Duran.
Yeah, and that's really why I, I agreed to pull this item off, is for a couple of reasons. Number one, I suspected there was a reason why, why this was being done the way it was. And second, because I thought that it would end up saving us money. It was just a gamble, in, in, in my thought. The second thing is that I would hope that we would all be careful moving forward when it comes to items related to the jail, knowing that we've got some things, you know, that are highly publicized right now, and that we could work these things. We have any questions, that they get answered beforehand, and that you make an extra effort if you're going to bring stuff related to the jail to us, so we don't have this, you know, added scrutiny to it. All right? All right.
Yeah, I just would echo both Supervisors' comments, and thank you for coming back with a more fully fleshed-out agenda item. We've already spoken about the fact that I would like to see more of these upfront before they come to us publicly, and I think we've agreed that that's going to happen. Before we take any action on this, I did want to just take the opportunity to call out that we have a gentleman sitting in the audience today, Captain Hatchison, who is going to be leaving Placer County. He is going to be retiring shortly. He is in charge of our jail operation, and I just really wanted to take the opportunity to thank him for his service to Placer County and to wish him absolutely the best in everything moving forward, and I hope you would all join me in those well wishes. Good work, man. We're going to miss you. Have fun, whatever you do. Okay. All right, what's the pleasure of the board on this one? I'm sorry? Oh, I'm sorry, public. Thank you. Yes, I got carried away. Any member of the public wish to comment on this item? Seeing none, what's the pleasure of the board? We have a motion Euler, a second Duran. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you very much. We're now going to move to our final department item. This is the County Executive/Human Resources Department, Elected Department Heads, Classified and Unclassified Management Employees Compensation, and Amendments to Chapter Three. This says Kate Sampson, but you are clearly not Kate Sampson, so.
She will join me.
Oh, she will. Okay. Okay. Kate, come on up.
Prior to conversation getting underway on this item, I'm going to ask County Counsel his advice on whether I should remain here or step out for conversations on this item.
Yeah, you're under no requirement to recuse yourself from this. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, Kate and Lori. Gentlemen, did we have a slide on this one? It might come up. Or a couple of slides, possibly.
In the meantime, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Mr. Carden and Mr. Bosch. I'm Lori Walsh, your HR Director, and I'm bringing forward, along with the CEO's representative, Kate Sampson, our Deputy CEO, an item that requests your board's consideration of a management compensation package for the unrepresented management employees. Previously this year, you'll recall that you did approve a Memorandum of Understanding with our largest organization, public, Placer Public Employee Organization, that resulted in a five-year contract allowing for some management, for some compensation and benefit changes for that group. Similarly, then, we bring this item to your board, requesting that the unrepresented management receives similar consideration in the form of compensation and benefits. Specifically, the package would include, and this is what would have been on your slide, a 4% salary increase that would be effective October 28th of this year, a 3% salary increase effective June of 2018, along with some changes to compensation that would increase the Tahoe Branch assignment pay over two-year period, but that would require eligibility to be based on residence, that would implement a 10-step salary schedule in 2019 that would involve 2.5% increments in those steps as opposed to the current 5% increments, and a change in the advancement from step one to step two to occur after 20, 80 hours- and a change in the advancement from step one to step two to occur after 20, 80 hours as opposed to a six-month period of time. Your board staff report also includes some other changes that bring into account some Chapter Three rule changes, personnel rule changes, and brings us with current practice to clarify some of our practices and to clarify some of that language. I'm glad to answer any questions that you may have. Kate is here to address any fiscal impacts that you might be interested in hearing more about. And otherwise, Mr. Bosch as well is here to answer questions.
Supervisor Euler.
Yes, Madam Chair, having heard staff's presentation, and in spite of counsel's acknowledgement that I am under no obligation, I am going to, at this point, step out, recuse myself from both discussion and vote on the side.
Thank you. We will wait until Supervisor Euler steps out of the room. All right, any other questions or comments or concerns from any member of the board? Is there anything CEO Bosch wanted to add to this presentation? Kate, anything you wanted to add to this presentation?
No, thank you.
Okay.
Lori, if I understand this correctly, then this is, these are actions that we're being asked to take consistent with the PPEO agreement?
Correct.
And nothing out of the ordinary in this, aside from sort of an alignment of opportunities moving forward for management staff?
Correct. And notably would keep in line, speaking about alignment, keep in line those salary spreads or the internal salary relationships that we have. When we change the salary of one set of employees, it can cause some compaction. And so this will help us keep those alignments.
Okay. I see no other questions. Oops, Supervisor Duran.
Yeah, approximately how many management staff does this affect?
Approximately 260.
Okay, thank you.
And as I recall, when we took these actions as relating to PPEO, this came out to a 2.2% increase year-over-year over the term of the agreement, which I believe we identified was actually slightly lower than cost of living has increased over the last couple of years. Is that, do I remember that correctly?
Mm-hmm, yes.
All right. Any questions or comments from any member of the public on this? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board. We have a Motion, Holmes. I'm going to give the second to Ygant on that one. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Please note that Supervisor Euler was out of the room and, I think, formally abstained from this. Thank you. We're now going to move to closed session. County Counsel, take us away.
The board will now adjourn for closed session, discussion with counsel regarding one item of litigation, Heidi Lepp versus Yolo County. Listed on page six of the agenda.
And we will be back here after closed session.
Counsel to discuss a new litigation case, Heidi Lepp versus Yolo County et al. The board heard a report and authorized, unanimously authorized, County Counsel Office to defend and indemnify District Attorney Investigator Brandon Olivera, a defendant named and served defendant in that case upon a request for defense. That concludes the closed session report.
All right. Having concluded all agenda items, we stand adjourned at 10:40, excuse me, 11:40 a.m.